Evening ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the independent city council meeting. It's Tuesday, July 25th, it's 6:30 in the evening. I won't mess up like I did last time. And let the record show that the councilors are all here. And in front of you, councilors, you have the minutes of our July 11th meeting. Do they meet with your approval? Is that my guess? Is that a motion?
Yes.
Yes, okay, signify. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, I oppose. Motion carries very much. Now, councilors, what I'm gonna do tonight is, with your indulgence, I'm gonna do a little mixing of some staff reports and visitor comments so that we can help, because I think that'll help move some things along and provide some clarity of information. So I'm gonna move back and forth. We'll still cover everything, but I want to do that. And so when we start that today, I'm gonna ask Chief Mason, I think, because we've had some questions and there's been some emails floating around related to marijuana. And at the last council meeting, City Manager Klein let us know that staff informed him there were some concerns about trying to move through some of the process. Could you give us an update on where that is? And, Council, is it okay if he sits from there? Is that all right? Chief, go ahead and speak from there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, sir.
So the reason that we got together to begin with and discussed where we were with the newly adopted rules regarding marijuana was because we had businesses in town that were already operating when the rules were passed. And we kind of had to decide how long of a grace period we were going to have to get those people into compliance. So the first step was that Karen Johnson contacted those businesses and informed them that there was indeed a new ordinance that they needed to come into compliance with. And according to her, many of them have contacted her and made attempts to fulfill the obligations that are in the new ordinance, but they're having a difficult time with certain sections of it. There is wording in it that requires things that are difficult for the existing businesses to comply with. So at this point, we've held off on any enforcement because we want to try to figure out what those roadblocks are and then bring that back to you and explain those roadblocks and see if there's some way that we can get it to where they're able to comply with the legislation and also that we're able to get the information that you wanted this day out. I know, for example, one of the biggest ones was the background checks that we requested of all of the, both owners and workers, employees, principals. Anyone have anything to do with the business? Those are required of those businesses that they get those from the state and from a federal clearing as well. And those have to be all within 30 days of completion. So you'd have to get all of the information from your employees and get them all fingerprinted and submitted within 30 days of when you're going to submit your request to the city. That's a big job, and so you have to figure out how you're gonna get that timing figured out so that you have it all before you turn it in. Because if 30 days passes according to our ordinance, it's no longer considered current. And so that's one that I don't know that we saw coming, I guess. It looked really good on paper, but when you start to actually go into the practice of it, it's things like that that they're having a difficult time with. We also weren't really sure what the advantages of having all of those backgrounds were because there's no guidance in what we can do with that information as far as perhaps telling someone, no, you can't have the business service. Employee isn't appropriate. There's no regulatory guidelines that were established along with the requirement. And so I think we still need to look at that a little bit. So City Manager and Karen herself sat down and went through some of the concerns that she had received from the businesses. And I think our next step was to ask the businesses to come in and explain some of those concerns with you. I'm not certain when that's going to be, but we're kind of... It was like our very first meeting that got reported, and that's where it went from here. Currently, the businesses that are in our town are operating legally for the state, but they haven't been able to get that certification from the city yet. And so that's why we're trying to figure it out because it's the current ones that are trying to come into compliance that haven't been able to.
And Ms. Johnson, I wondered, you had shared with me that trying to work with the state regulatory folks is a difficulty and gets some of the... Would you share a little bit of that place?
Yes, I called the state to find out if I could even just get a copy of their applying application plan. So maybe it might be easier if we were using a very similar form. And I had to submit a public records request, and I'm still having to see the document. And some of that still may be in the app. And I was trying to look at it later on, how much to give.
Councilors, do you have questions for the staff at this point? As I understand too, there's no proposals. You're just in the information gathering place. Is that correct?
Absolutely. We're in a place where we're trying to figure out what a reasonable timeline is for these businesses to come into compliance. But then we're now seeing that we may need to extend that to be reasonable because of the difficulties with some of the requirements that we're putting forth.
Councilors, do you have questions from staff?
Yes. Would you say that the stumbling block that you just described to us is one of the largest ones and sort of characterizes the problems that are coming up?
I really can't answer that very well. Ms. Johnson? She actually has had contact with all the businesses and heard from them firsthand what their concerns were.
Yeah, the background checks, the certain...
That was one of the main things. Okay. The reason I had so much trepidation about this was because the way it was presented before, it sounded to me like we were going to try to dumb down the ordinance, and I didn't want to see that happen.
Are there additional questions?
Well, I guess I have an opinion there. I look at any kind of, anything like this as being able to be divided into must-have things, should-have things, and nice-to-have things. And I think I look at those questions the same way. And if there's a must-have, then you don't have a choice. You shouldn't dumb it down. If there's a nice-to-have, sure, maybe we don't need it for six months. But I think that's a good way of looking at it anyway. I don't think every question has even power. But the fact that if the, if the state gets... Somehow there's the background checks, the state's up doing it, and then we do it also? Or are we just relying on the state?
We're requiring them to get their own. So our local businesses and their employees would all have to submit to the state and also to the FBI to get their own copies of their own backgrounds and then turn those in to us. That's how our ordinance reads now.
Well, to me, that's the kind of stuff that I think that's why we have staff, they should do the job and then come back with a recommendation that you feel was fair after you looked at how to do these.
Right, and that...
I don't think we're gonna solve it.
We haven't really got there yet.
Well, those fingerprinting checks don't always come that quickly. I have to work with the childcare division and all of our staff after you fingerprint. And I mean, we can wait three, four to six months if they've been, you know, out of state.
So anyway, this is, I've not seen anybody else play. You can begin. Please.
I was going to say that I know it is tedious sometimes getting fingerprints back because our former police chief was delighted to call me and say that I had failed mine and hadn't come back yet, but it was only because of a smeared thumb. But I also want to point out that we require, the schools require this kind of thing for anyone who works with children. And the marijuana business is still a pretty dicey business. It's brand new, and I don't see that there's any reason that we shouldn't be cautious. Just my opinion.
So what I think we're hearing is that staff are on it. They're following up. They're moving forward appropriately. And the efforts that we heard at the last meeting was to keep us informed. This was another level to keep us informed as the process is going. So what I'm gonna do now is, because I know that there are some people that wanted to comment about this under public comment, so this is where I'm gonna kind of juggle back and forth with everybody's okay. And I know that Mr. Patton, I think you wanted to speak to... If I could also before, because I forgot. There was, Mr. Irvine, there was a question about ongoing construction, and you were gonna tell...
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, I drove by the strike of road property there. And yeah, there, what it is, is the site design review application has been approved. That's for essentially the site work, the front-end improvements, the underground utilities, potentially the parking improvements. We have not received building permit applications yet, so there should not be any buildings going up.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to clarify that because I know that there was some interesting information around. Mr. Patton, did you want to speak to this at all?
If your marijuana businesses present want to speak, I'd like to speak after that.
I don't think we have any here this evening. I know that we're gonna hear them later on, but I want to make sure I give the opportunity on using still requests or...
I just say one thing. Yeah, it sounds like a real bureaucratic problem. I really wouldn't have an objection personally. I just think, you know, resolving that. The state does require all that information to get a license.
Right.
So it shouldn't be due to these businesses. We just, I heard you mentioned you don't want to go there with some things they can't.
Yeah, trying to get one ticked off to the other.
Yeah, but once they get them, then they know they have to renew them on a main basis, and they should be able to do it.
Right.
I suspect it would be logical to fix it in a meaningful way. So that's all I am...
Thank you. I just, I wanted to make sure that...
The whole thing is, the thing like this kind of... In case anybody has it.
Okay, later. Thanks for... Thank you, appreciate that. Now, what I'd like to do is... We have a lot of guests this evening that would like to speak on the inclusion ordinance. Now, while it's not a public hearing, I'd like to... What I'm gonna do is, under public comment, let folks speak. But I think before we have folks speak, again, I'm gonna have a staff report. And this is a little out of order, but I think you can see what we're trying to do here. Getting a little bit of a report, and then we'll have some public comment. And then we probably will go into making decisions or discussion. And then we'll get back on our regular track. Is that okay with everybody? Is that all right? So, Mr. Irvine, I think you're going to speak to the item 7.2, declaring independence an inclusive city.
Yeah, you want to hear, you want to hear there?
Your choice.
Okay, I'll just sit here if that's okay.
Thank you.
So yeah, with regard to this resolution, you obviously got the staff report, goes included with the packet. And I guess I want to start by saying, people frequently ask the mayor and I to give presentations at World Development and other conferences about remodelizations happening here at Independence. And whenever I do one of the presentations, I always start back in 1996 because that was a time when the community really decided they didn't like the direction that things were going. And rather than kind of sit around and complain about it, they said, "Okay, we're gonna try to do something about it." And they embarked on a year-long process, literally going out and talking to everybody in the community saying, "Hey, what do you love about Independence? What do you want to see improved? What is the sort of shining vision of Independence that's in your mind? And how can we achieve that?" That really, you know, charted a course. There's several plans that came out of that process that set the course that we are still navigating on today. You know, I wasn't there in 1986, but it was in 2009 when we updated that plan and created the Vision 2020 Plan. That was another one. We really did a community-wide effort, surveying, stakeholder interviews. And we engaged and included everyone that we could that lived in the community. It was churches, it was community groups. And we went to the high school and pulled senior government classes. Went to the airport, went to farmer's housing development. I mean, we went to every aspect of the community because it really was important to have the community the ones who are kind of charting that big-picture course. You know, more recently, we've taken the same approach with our Hartz Plan update. Get everyone involved, all aspects of the community, find out what their needs are and how we potentially meet those needs. You know, by doing this, we really, I think, it's been the foundation of the success of this community. We built playgrounds, trails, a dog park. And the legal library was a community project that came from, you know, engaging the community, getting them involved, getting them excited, and then working with them to do these community projects. You know, I mean, council believed enough in this process that three or four years ago, they actually set a council goal of, you know, to ensure that we are continually trying to reach out and include all sectors of the community to make sure that we are essentially meeting all their needs. So, you know, there's obviously a lot of turmoil around this issue these days. There's a lot of folks running around asking communities to do this and that. And I guess the thing I want to say is that, you know, we're a community that cares about our residents. And we engaged all of our community to identify problems and taking Independence a better place. It's a process that has served as well for many, many years. And this resolution that's proposed here all today is really just an expression of what Independence has always been and in my opinion, always will be. Nothing more, nothing less. So I think that's kind of the presentation I'd like to make. I'm happy to answer questions or if you want to open up the panel.
Questions for staff relating to this resolution?
I might ask some after we hear from them.
Okay, let me get into discussion. And just a clarification, Mr. Irvine. And so what this resolution basically does is, because obviously you and I...
It's essentially an affirmation of our community philosophy. It does not set us on a particular course or keep us from a particular course. It's essentially just affirming, in my opinion, what we've already been doing for many, many years.
And following the state law.
That's it.
Okay. All right, so what I'm gonna do now is, we're gonna call this public comment, and I have a list of people who submitted paperwork who would like to speak. Now, there are a number of people who would like to speak tonight. And so what I'm gonna ask is you limit your comments to three minutes. And I always like to tell people, one of the greatest speeches ever given was the Gettysburg Address, which was two minutes and 38 seconds. So you're getting it. But I think you can please make your point. And if some other folks have already said what you want to say, feel free to say, "I agree with what he or she has already said." And but I want to give everybody who wants to speak the opportunity. And so Shannon Cocain? Good evening and welcome to City Council.
Good evening, Mayor. Ricardo, city councilors and city leaders. My name is Shannon Cocain, and I am not from Independence, but it's been my home since 2014. Independence is a place where my husband Darren and I have felt entirely welcome and at home since the day we moved into our house on Fourth Street. I want everyone who lives here or moves here to feel the same way. As such, I urge you to support the inclusivity resolution on tonight's agenda because quite simply, words matter and gestures matter. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Benjamin Gorman. So I used to call you Mr. Gorman as my son's teacher. Years ago. Good evening and welcome to the council.
City Council members of Independence. Thank you for all you do for our community and thank you for listening to us today. My name is Benjamin Gorman. I've lived in Independence for over a decade now. I teach at Central High School, and I talk to your children. I've got this statement in Spanish and English, and I'll read both if you double my time. As I see it, there are only four arguments that can be made against this statement. The first is that it's not necessary. I know that to be simply incorrect. The people who say statements like this are not necessary aren't threatened. So what they are really saying is that these statements are not necessary to them. The people who are most threatened won't be speaking here tonight, but I assure you they exist in our community. I see them in my classroom every day. I have seen my trans students in tears because they believe the world is against them. My undocumented students sobbing because they don't know what they'll become with their families. My female students harmed by all kinds of different, all different kinds of sexism. My Muslim, Sikh, Jewish, and Buddhist students threatening for their faith. My students of color afraid because of the racism they have read online or seen on TV or sadly have experienced right here in Oregon. We cannot tell them that everything will be all right. They are safe from all forms of bigotry they will face in their lives. But we can tell them that we object to bigotry and that we will stand by their sides. That's important when you have a chance to do that tonight. The second argument is that this is too political, too partisan. That argument, in my opinion, has been assault. Our country has been marred by this state of bigotry since before its conception. What makes our country great is we have people of courage who have been working to slowly and exertively wipe out that stain and form a better union in spite of accusations that they were being too partisan or overly political. I ask you to be those people of courage tonight. The third argument against this resolution, but what I think is most legitimate, is the concern that this statement may bring unwanted attention to people who already feel threatened. I think that worry comes from a very good place, a place of concern for our neighbors. If I for just one second believed that this would harm the people it seeks to protect, I would not be standing before you tonight. But this statement will not do that. The last argument against this resolution is the most heinous. I assume there are some in our community who don't want an inclusivity statement because they really don't want to live in an inclusive community. There's some group on this list that they think that is inferior, and they want that group to feel unwelcome in our city.
Skip here a little bit for the sake of time. Thank you.
That's the argument you will be most directly confronting when you vote to make this statement. You will be saying that our city government is committed to welcoming and working for all our city's residents, even if some people would prefer that others are excluded from your protection and attention. I hope you'll make a strong statement tonight that Independence is a welcoming place for us all, and I'll be even more proud to call it Independence Home.
Thank you, appreciate that. Ode Campos.
Good evening and welcome to council. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all. My name is Ode Campos, and tonight, I am representing myself as a member of the community. I was born and he was the best like wise Querma, the two wonderful parents, Maria and Odile. We came to the United States in search of the great American dream. To us, that was in the chaos, fancy card. To us, that meant that every single one of us would get a decent education and the opportunity to pursue happiness. I am sure you all understand the importance of the vote that you are going to be making today. The difference that makes for families like mine. Growing up, I've been called names solely based on the color of my skin. I've had family members told, "You don't belong here. Go back to Mexico." Having absolutely no idea where we were born or what our incorrect immigration status is, all solely based on pristine nationality. Gervin Brown. I come here tonight to advocate for them and the families like mine. Thank you for letting us know and helping us feel like we belong, like we are home. I'm grateful for the city of Independence. Declaring ourselves as an inclusive city will not create a flood of new families coming to the area. It will not increase our community. What it will do, however, is make it clear to everyone living here or just visiting that the city of Independence embraces and appreciates our differences, that we stand here together in opposing acts of intolerance committed against any one of our community members, that we welcome all. Martin Luther King Jr. once said, "The ultimate tragedy is not the oppression and cruelty by the bad people, but the silence over that by the good people." Thank you for standing up for our community. Thank you for standing up for families like mine. I've never been prouder to live in our great community as I am today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Donna Byrne.
Good evening and welcome. Thank you. I've lived in Independence for about a year, and I love the diversity in this town. I love that I can go to Zumba classes at a studio where lots and lots of people speak Spanish. I think this is a great town. I don't think this ordinance or this resolution changes anything legally, but it is important to say this. It is important for those of us, especially who have privilege, as I do, to make it very clear that this is the kind of town that we want to live in, and I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you so much for coming, please. Christina Marquez.
Good evening. As you mentioned, my name is Christina Marquez. I'm here on behalf of Gauza and on behalf of a lot of the families that we serve. At Gauza, we're Oregon's immigrant rights organization. We serve and uplift immigrant families in Oregon. A lot of the families, as I mentioned, call this city their home and aren't able to be here because of the fear of, you know, disintegration and immigration also. So, Rosa, as I mentioned, it's in a certain time for immigrant families, families who have been an integral part of the city and Oregon's economic fabric, as well as our cultural fabric. Many have been afraid to take their children to school, going to work, visiting local government buildings like the courthouse, and even opening their door at home for fear of running into ICE or Immigration Customs Enforcement. And indeed, there have been real life examples of, you know, children being separated from their families. And while there's, you know, very little that the city can do, it's important that for Independence' well-being and the functioning of the city, that families won't be under threat of deportation and separation for simply calling, you know, the police or going to the public library or even taking on a public transportation. So it's really vital that families here allow and clear from the city that Independence has a policy of not using local resources for federal immigration strong. And we want to make sure that that happens by passing this resolution. I commend you all for considering the resolution in response to the increased fear in our communities. And passing an inclusive resolution is a positive way of showing respect for all people who call this place their home. Thank you so much, and again, I hope you vote yes.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Vicki McCovin.
Good evening and welcome to council. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city officials. As you can see, I'm scrambling, re-sambling my nose in front of the district board. I still feel myself a relative newcomer to Independence. I mean, come here in 2014, but it's obviously a very rich, diverse community. And as the lady mentioned earlier, sometimes when we are privileged by nature of our own ethnic background, we make assumptions. I know as a teacher, I would assume that students understood certain things or knew certain things, and it's not always the case. And so as prior speakers have said, affirming what we believe that Independence is an inclusive city is worth stating and putting into writing. And sometimes along with privilege, we make further assumptions. I've been involved in the city museum, and several Latino students came in, students at Western, and they came in and they liked what they saw in the museum, but they wanted more. They came in then with a professor anthropology or sociology professor, and they are involved with us at the museum and project to translate into Spanish some of the panels that we have in there, explaining the Rosero's program and the diversity of the Hispanic community here. And so I think that adding, and any way that we can by passing this resolution to affirm our inclusivity is important. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming to this evening. Juan Navarro.
Good evening, welcome. Sorry, I always give it a super fast. Okay, so I'm gonna try to make mine as short as possible. My full name is Juan Navarro. And just a little bit about myself is that I was brought here to the United States when I was three years old, and I couldn't walk till I was 15 years old. I was brought here because the medical treatment in the United States is much better than in Mexico, and that's the American dream. At 15 years old, I was able to walk for the first time. And just a little bit more about myself is I was once in this spot before. I love this community. My office was just about 20 feet down that long. I love this to death. What I'm about to say always puts me in this, but I'm proud to say to progress this forward. I am undocumented. I now have documentation, and even though this community is great, I now have documentation, and even though this community is great, it's always sitting in the back of my head, the boogeyman is always there, because who knows who might betray me and send me back. I am a person that loves to help the community. I've helped it so much, and I'm blessed to graduate from Western, and I'm blessed to be the first one in my family to attend a master's program this fall. But like I said, I am not safe, and I know I'm safe here, but it's not always the same that ICE and police get miss, how do you say it? Miss, like confused. I'll put it this way, let's say, Independence prides itself on helping the Latino community. I know, I was one of the engines. Let's say ICE comes into and takes a couple people. So, they're gone. The Latino community says, "Hey, the police department did it." That's not true, but they know it's true. And that ruins that trust that this city has been building for a long time. So, one of my last things I want to say is that please take into consideration and vote yes on the resolution. Continue helping the community, continue helping the Latino population, and continue helping people like me and many others in this wonderful community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Jasper Smith.
Good evening, sir.
Welcome, Ms. Ms.
Thank you. I was pleased to see this on the agenda, and I was here very well with a positive statement that described a lot of reasons I chose to live here. So, I'll be very brief. Basically, I have come to love all my neighbors and like them all to feel safe and welcome here. And towards that, I wish the council, not only to pass the resolution, but to pass it unanimously. That would be very important.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming in. Jose Alzano Alvarez. Good evening, welcome to council.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, members of the council. My name is Almonso Viveros, and I actually lived here for almost all my life here in Independence. My family came here, protected since 1961, and we have been able to make great contributions to the community. So, I'm working, able to mention that immigrants enhance the community here in Independence. And so, with your support in affirming the resolution, you're going to be able to send a message that other groups are promoting hate, showing that Independence is a great community that's going to be able to enhance the ideals and the principles that make Independence such a great city. So again, just to be very brief, just ask you to support unanimously this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Are there others in the audience who would like to speak that have filled out a card or anything like that? Yes, sir. Please step up and identify yourself and welcome to council.
City council members and mayor, thank you for letting me speak. What I'd like to say is I started a thread on the Facebook page trying to get people to come to the council meetings, and I listed that this was going to be one of the topics that I was figuring, you know, and I listed on there, whether you're for it or against it, you need to show up and be a part of this. And what I'd like to say is I'm glad that we're an all-inclusive community. I moved here from Phoenix, Arizona, and obviously, there's a lot of Hispanic communities there, and most of my kids, their friends were Hispanic. And, you know, we didn't know anything about Oregon, I'd never been to Oregon, and we were pleasantly surprised to see there was a large Hispanic population here in town. And, you know, we have neighbors that the kids, some of the kids have moved away and still eat in my house at least once a week, you know, and they're close to us and we care about them. One of the things I'd like to bring up, though, from that post, is somebody wrote this to me, and this to me was kind of offensive. I mentioned that I didn't even realize there was a problem with inclusivity in this community, because I have a lot of Hispanic people that live around me, we've always gotten, you know, together well, and this is what somebody wrote to me. "You, as a white male, are part of the majority. You are speaking about how minorities are not being discriminated against, but you aren't in the position to be a victim of discrimination based on your race and ethnicity. People who are in that position are saying there's a fact, a problem, which is why this is brought up. I'm happy that you and your neighbors get along, but unfortunately, that does not represent the whole community." My problem with that is I didn't always live in Arizona and I didn't always live in Oregon. I grew up outside of Detroit, Michigan. And I have been discriminated against, and for this person to tell me that I don't know anything about discrimination because of my race, which this is kind of ironic, that someone would discriminate against you and tell you that you don't know anything about discrimination because of your race. But I remember as a child, my dad worked for General Motors, and we got a new stove, and he had a friend that worked, that needed a stove, and he was black. My dad loaded that stove into the trunk of our car, and we, as a family, took it to this guy's house, and we went through a black community. And we were told to get out of their community, we were told, "What are you doing here? Go back," you know, and we got, you know, called names. And what I would like to say is, I like the diversity, and, but the thing is, is don't assume that because I'm white, I've never been discriminated against. And I'm here to help whoever needs help. You know, I've helped everybody I can. I mean, I go into Winco, I bought people groceries, I don't pay, I don't look to see whether they're white, black, Hispanic, or whatever else. When people need help, they need help. But if we start basing everything on race and assuming that because, like myself, I'm white, I don't know, I've never been discriminated against, or, you know, I'm sorry, I wasn't born with a silver spoon in my mouth, and, you know, I go through everything everybody else has to. And I would just like to say that I hope that no matter what race you are, you won't assume something about someone else just because of the color of their skin. And I would just like, I would like to see, we've enjoyed being in this community for the last 12 years, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you for coming in. Do you like to, if you'd like to speak from a forward place? Good evening and welcome. Please let us know who you are.
I'm Jennifer Flores. And we, I lived here also since 2014, it was kind of a big influence that year. Brief around, but I also, I was raised in a kind of, excuse me, a weird dynamic. My father had a very good job, and my sister and I were brought up in a very Caucasian neighborhood. Super sorry to get me talking about the race stuff. So, for me, always very brown, extremely whitewashed is what they call us. The brown folks would call us whitewashed, the white folks would call me names. So I have this weird dichotomy of being on both sides. I absolutely believe in inclusion. I work at the high school, I work in the special ed department, and I think inclusion needs to be across the board, not just based on the color of our skin, on the content of our character, and it's just everywhere, it just needs to be, it just needs to happen. With that said, I don't have a problem with proclamation necessarily, but I feel like beyond the proclamation, our actions are far more important. So, while I'm certain that this proclamation will go forward, I just want to remind folks, especially when you have someone like the gentleman who just spoke, that it doesn't matter, brown, brown on the outside and white on the inside, or vice versa, or any of those things, we're just all people. There's one race, and it's human, and we just want to be kind to each other. That's it.
Thank you very much. Last call. Okay, what I'd like to do, council, and this is, this is a shuffle back and forth, since we have a group of folks here, let's just deal with this at this point, is that okay with everybody? Okay, you've heard a staff report, you see a revolusion, what are your thoughts before we get into motions and things like that? Ken, I know you had, you might, you said you might want to make some comments, and I...
Maybe a question, right? Can I ask a question of somebody at the top, or is that not supposed to be?
Well...
I guess...
Why not? I mean, why not?
Mr. Gorman.
Come on up.
You mentioned, you mentioned groups that are, I got, you know, like racist groups here in Independence, can you give me some examples?
Well, I think we have...
You said like groups?
Yeah, I think we certainly have groups in the sense of groups in Oregon. Oregon has, I was really shocked, I've only lived in this state for 15 years, and only recently, only in the last couple of years have I been learning about the extent of racism in our state's history, which is really shocking. You know, and I admit I was very naive about that. So we certainly have racist groups, but racism is far more complicated than I think people are comfortable often talking about. There are degrees, and there are people who are, you know, will, you know, commit racist behavior completely, you know, I don't know.
Absolutely. So what is the name of the group?
So, for example, there is a group in Eugene, there is a hate group, so when I talk about my students who have raised racism, I don't know if we have any hate groups that I don't have in Independence itself. When I talk about groups in the sense of, you know, like within Facebook conversations, I see people that I would put into categories here in Independence where I would say, this is, and perhaps not even knowledgeably, I don't think that folks recognize when they make statements about, you know, all undocumented people are actual lie or whatever, I don't think they realize they're being racist in many cases. And so, I'm the one who's saying that is a group of arguments that I'm seeing. So it's a category of arguments, not like any organized hate group or any hate groups.
Thank you, Mr. Gorman. What do folks think? Are any comments related to the resolution or thoughts from the presentations? I could start. I've lived in the community for 18 years, been on the council since 2010, I think. And I know that the city has really tried hard to be inclusive and encouraging all our citizens to participate in city government. I know our staff works very hard, I know the police department works very hard to be inclusive. As I understand it, this resolution doesn't change anything, we will continue to be an inclusive city as we have been, we'll continue to follow state laws and federal laws. It's just, we're just stating what we're already doing and will continue to do. Other comments or thoughts?
Well, I guess the, yeah, the one thing I just wanted to point out, because, I mean, we've talked, we've talked a lot about race here tonight, and that's an issue that I understand, my husband is biracial, but Section 1 covers so much more than that under diversity. We're talking about the diversity among its residents in race, ethnicity, religion, socioeconomic status, age, sexual orientation, gender and gender identification, national origin, more perceived national origin, immigration, refugee status, veteran status, disability, and dot, 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 we then move to paragraph 2. So this really, it moves beyond race, it moves on to all of the characteristics that we as humans share, and those are all elements that here in Independence, we welcome. So I hope that most of you have taken the time to read the resolution. I've reposted it several times in the thread that John talked about. No one could define for me what language in the resolution they found disturbing or offensive, and so I'm excited to see all the support that has come out here tonight. So I'd like to thank you for showing up and sharing your thoughts and doing some very great things here this evening.
Other councillors wishing to say anything?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks. Yeah, I just wanted to thank everyone for taking the time to come out. I found it kind of heartwarming to see everybody come together and show support for this resolution. And I do think it was especially important to remember that, especially from the last few presentations, that even if this resolution's passed, we do have like a constant struggle to uphold it. So, thank you all.
Councillor Morton, if you would like to speak?
Yes. I agree with both Councillor Takis and Councillor Hicks that this describes things we already do. The resolution puts kind of a bow on it and makes it, makes it visible and makes a statement. We are part of a group here, we are part of the group of the people who live in Independence. And I've heard it said several times that there's a different style, a different thought, a different camaraderie here, and I would have to agree with that. When I got on council, which was been 16 years ago, 15 years ago, my two things that I really wanted to work for were, now the word is inclusivity, but it was getting everybody involved, and it was getting a hotel, and it looks like we're going to do both.
Well, I guess to me, I'm really happy to be able to speak about this, because, one, I'm very proud that we are a community of action. We don't just talk about it, we've been doing it every single day, as you heard in the staff presentation. This has been part of our council goals officially for four years, and before then, it's been how we've operated for the police department through all parts of the city. As many of you know, I'm a naturalized American citizen. I came from somewhere else, mom and dad, dad was in the military, they didn't have kids, they were issued children in Germany, they got me there. And so, and I remember becoming an American citizen, and I remember what it was like, because I too got teased, as some folks talked about, because I was the German, I was the proud, I was from somewhere else. I'm really proud, you know, I've had pleasure through my Olympic experiences representing this country, both athletically and administratively, to be around the world and know how important inclusivity is, because a lot of the chuppels that are going on in the world are, people aren't getting along with each other. I'm really proud that we get along here, you know, in order to form a more perfect union, we're working at it every single day. So I'm really proud to speak in favor of this resolution. I don't think to vote on it, because I don't think there's going to be a tie. But I just, I'm really proud of what we're doing in this community, and I think that's enough of a speech. Is there anything else that we can talk about, or would somebody like to suggest?
Actually, I have one thing.
Yes, sir.
If you go to the, I call it Independence Days, it was called...
Western.
Western. And you see the community together, and you'd have to go out of your way to try to find something that's different, other than maybe this color of our skin. Other than that, people are next to people and they're doing well. One place where I think we could do better, you're not going to believe this, is in city government. We have a lot of open air, a lot of open positions periodically on committees, and we need to get people, all kinds of people, in on these positions, and it's just not adequate. So think about that, I encourage you.
Great. Is this an action item?
Yes, Mayor.
Please do. Sure.
I move a approval of resolution number 17-1460, declaring the city of Independence as an inclusive city.
And I second that and invite your unofficial consensus.
Thank you, that's kind of you. I have a motion, I have a second, is there further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And vote. Not a aye there, but I'm in favor too. I was trying to follow up, and I got all messed up. The motion passes.
Could I ask Odi Kapos if he has his talk written down?
I do.
Can you turn that into the city recorder? I think that was adequate, it should be part of the minutes.
Thank you. Glad to say that. And I want to thank people for taking the time on a hot Tuesday night to come in and speak with us, I really appreciate it. So, councillors, if you don't mind, can we take a five-minute break, please? Any objection to that? Okay, and then we'll get back to the regular, the regular everyday business, and we'll go from there, okay? So we're in recess for about five minutes. Okay, we're back in session here, folks. We're going to go back up, council members, we're going to go to visitor and public comment, and then we're going to just move forward from there, if that's okay with everybody? Okay, the next people, we have Matthew, excuse me, Matthew Lynn?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I'm just pulling up something on the computer.
Do you want us to come back around to you in a few minutes? I can do that. Are there other people that have public comment to make at this point? Without objection, what I'm going to do is we'll go on to council liaison reports, and then we'll come back to Matthew, to Mr. Lynn. Under mayor report, just to let folks know, oh, excuse me, then we'll just stay in the regular order. Mr. Lynn, you're up.
Sorry about that. Mayor, esteemed council members, you know who I am, and I'm sure that this is more difficult for me than it is for you, but I know that I truly appreciate the forum and the opportunity to speak, and tonight has been very interesting. So, dear city council, I want to present an updated offer for your consideration. What I'd like to propose is a $50,000 payment on or before September 20th of this year, and then the promissory note in terms that we have currently would have a two-year extension. This added time will help increase the equity and make the real estate easier to refinance through conventional bank financing sources. Other issues to consider that I wanted to just kind of run through, how does it make sense that the city would take a property back and that I would lose all of the equity and money invested over this? that I would lose all of the equity and money invested over this roughly ten-year period of time and effort? I mean, Mr. Klein's proposed outcome of me losing this property is not in the spirit of the original agreement, which was to take a derelict gas station property from boarded-up windows and environmental contamination to a viable restaurant business. And that's what we have. During the intervening eight years, it is undeniable that our community and country suffered through a recession that is widely recognized as one of the worst in our history. And during the past several years, it is not uncommon that the real estate mortgages and bank notes have had to be renegotiated in response to this difficult financial time. Mr. Klein has characterized this as a subsidy for our business. He has also highlighted how the city has not offered this type of agreement to other area businesses. The fact is, the city came up into possession of this property from an estate of the prior owner. And our agreement is in fact unique, because the city doesn't own multiple gas station properties with unsolved environmental issues. We can't compare this to other local, we can't compare this to other local properties, because it is in fact a unique property, which required extensive time and effort to resolve environmental issues on site. The city has earned and continues to earn interest on this loan, and has already offered a significant principal reduction for an extension. As far as economic renewal and investment goes, this has been a successful investment for the city. City manager on several occasions acknowledges that he does not like me, and therefore is doing everything in his power to persuade you and the council not to extend this note. Are there not other local businesses that have relied on city assistance and continued modifications to existing agreements and contracts? I can think of several. And it's a recurring theme. Have other local and/or current developers come to the city to ask for change orders, or construction, increased budgets for various additions to the scope of work that they are performing? I have been in this council and heard numerous requests. What political motivations are behind this? I have serious concerns that there are competing interests here, and perhaps other developers who have relationships with Mr. Klein, that are moving the path of this discussion away from extending the current agreement at the detriment of myself. As a man who has invested considerably in this community and this town center, and by all accounts has delivered several positive retail and restaurant locations in town, I am asking you to accept my cash offer and extend this note, so that I can seek conventional financing when the equity is in more favorable ratio. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you for your presentation. I have, the next speaker is Martha Lynn. Good evening. Welcome to council.
Thank you. It's my privilege to be able to address you this evening. I am Matthew's mother. And I have observed through the last nine-plus years, just how hard my son has worked on this enterprise of Mechanico, which now has a barbecue restaurant in the building. He has not only put money, but he has put hours and hours of sweat equity into this business. I was trying to think of some things to comment on here, and a couple of things came to mind. One of them is, you know, the hotel that you're preparing for. And some of the wonderful things that you have planned and put into action, and that the Independence residents are being able to benefit from. And not only the Independence residents, but people from outlying areas, because certainly when the hotel is in place, there's going to be a big boost, I think, in the tourism here. Because we live in a beautiful place. And outside of the conventions, I would bet that the summer months will be quite used in the hotel facility. How can you resist being on the water? And being in a place where you can have the intimacy of riding a bike through areas where hops are growing, root areas are growing, vineyards are planted, wineries are popping up. I mean, it's, it's a wonderful thing. And it's going to attract a lot of people, I'm sure. And a hotel, I don't know whether it's planning on having a restaurant inside, but it's certainly something like that that brings so many tourists to a community, not even tourists, business people coming for conventions. They also are looking for some diversity when they come to a location. And so a hotel and the tourism industry itself, it needs supporting players. And when I think of Mechanico, I think of it as something that plays that role. It is, maybe when you look at the building, which is a refurbished one-pump gas station, you don't think that it is so pretty. But people that have lived their lives in Independence can remember when that was a functioning gas station. It has a little bit of nostalgia to it. And Mechanico is very unique. It has capitalized on a trend that is very popular in Portland and is becoming popular across multiple states. I was just on South Commercial and Mildred yesterday, and I saw the Beehive. The Beehive, it's a food court with little carts. And it's very much a concept of Mechanico. It is a gravel lot that is being utilized by a number of businesses. And so the affordability is there. They're not having to build, dig foundations or anything else. It's very kind of environmentally friendly in that regard. And I think that Mechanico represents that kind of a trend, the recycle, reuse, repurpose idea that is so popular among the college and the young adults. And for that reason, it attracts a lot of people. I have been at Mechanico. People haven't known who I was. I was just sitting at the bar. And they've had wonderful things to say about how cool it is, and how popular it would be if it was in Portland. I think it really adds to the diversity that can be provided to people that come to stay in a hotel and to enjoy the city of Independence. It's very unique.
Thank you.
I'm not quite finished.
Okay, you can help wrap it up.
So anyway, I, I just want to reiterate that it's a very new concept. It's low, low impact, because he hasn't dug into the ground to construct anything. But he has repurposed an existing building that it has sentimental, nostalgic effects for a lot of people. And it provides the unique venue. It's left by locals and out-of-towners alike. It adds to the amenities of the city, and what the city can offer to its local as well as guests. And it is currently a destination, pub and restaurant, all on its own. My son is the current owner of Mechanico. He's put considerable money and sweat equity into the derelict building, making it a viable business. He has been a patient and hopeful supporter of Independence. He was regional coordinator for Start Making a Reader Today. He has participated with the business incubator of Independence, was on that council. He has restored and found occupants for properties in the city, including where the oven bird currently sits and the Independence Grill. And now he's requesting that the city expand the financing on this viable business. And why does a city have economic development or business incubators? Do cities not frequently make concessions with businesses and potential businesses? Tax breaks, floating bonds. I hope, considering Matthew's current offer, the relatively small balance due on the note, or on the loan, the viability of Mechanico as a business and popular attraction for in and out-of-towners, and also the loss this would inflict financially to Matthew after nine years of operating this business, I hope that you will accept his offer. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Are there other public comments to be made tonight? Okay. Please identify yourselves, so Karen has the...
I just found about this. You know, I'd just like to say, you know, I'm not even a customer of Mechanico. I, I went there when they first opened, I think, once. And I don't really drink or anything. But, you know, I've noticed that businesses picked up quite a bit there. And, you know, I don't mean to badmouth anything, but if, if he can come up with fifty thousand dollars, that's more than my net's ever been, you know? And if we can help a small business owner out, I'm all for that. I mean, look at all the money he put into my net stuff. I mean, good guy, great, you know? And I've seen a lot of people come into town to his business. And if they, they're coming in here, you know, they're gonna be going over to Jimmy's for gas and go to other places here in town too. So, you know, I, I just, I'd really hate to see it close down.
Thank you for your opinion. Okay, I don't see anybody else rushing the microphone. I have no more little slips of paper. So we're gonna keep moving forward under reports and presentations. Just a couple of things for you folks, from me. I'm gonna be attending the mayor's conference, summer conference. And I want to let folks know that Sean Irvine is also presenting, is a primary presenter there. And really appreciate him taking his time to, to present to seventy to eighty mayors from around the state. And he's presented before, and he's also been a well-deceived. Also, just letting you know that in the Oregon Transportation Plan that was recently passed by the legislature, there were some additional dollars that are gonna come through for transportation, both in the city and the county. And there's some guesses on what that might be, but you're never sure. And, you know, until, you know, it's a positive step forward for local governments also. So that's what I have to report. Councillor Takis, would you like to have anything to say about Traffic Safety Commission, sir?
Yeah, I was unfortunately unable to make the last Traffic Safety Commission, but I'm gonna lean on Mr. Irvine over there to talk about some grants that were discussed.
Yeah, so the Traffic Safety Committee pretty regularly gets requests from the community for various, you know, installation of various traffic safety devices. And in this budget, we actually did approve a small amount of money to fund a sort of a pilot small grant program for neighborhoods to essentially propose traffic calming measures. So we're actually in the process of developing the guidelines, looking for a little bit of feedback about what we should and should not be funding. One thing, you know, this is, this will not be resulting in stop signs and speed bumps in every, every block and intersection. This is more for, you know, kind of other, other type of, of calming measures. And that's pretty much the gist of it for now. Like I say, we're kind of looking for input on what's, you know, where we should be directing people into the types of things we want to fund.
Great. Do you want to take it?
Yeah. Historic Preservation Commission, I hate to say this, but we are slowly still inching away to getting closer to changing the historic preservation code. I think we've jumped through some legal hurdles, and we'll be reviewing it again and inch a little closer to it. So that's still in the works. We're also reviewing some plans for renovation of the, what was, what's gonna be called the Area Fifty-One, the Louvre. I don't remember the name now.
Louvre.
Louvre. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And then I'm also gonna talk to the grant man, have the grant man talk about some other grants through the Historic Preservation Commission.
So similar to the Traffic Safety Commission, we actually were able to get some grant money from the state, sort of a local government program, which will be passing through as, in part, as a residential property improvement program for properties that are contributing historic resources. So folks would be eligible for up to a thousand dollars towards repair of exterior, exterior repair or improvements to historic contributing properties. They have to match it dollar for dollar. The city also was able to put a little bit of money in the budget for a companion program for historic non-contributing properties. These are properties that have been altered to an extent that they no longer essentially add value to the historic character of the neighborhood. The purpose there would be for folks to make exterior improvements to the homes that essentially bring them closer into the original historic style and, and look and feel for the neighborhood.
Great. Councillor Hicks, would you want to talk a little bit about some busy act topics?
Sure. Well, given the timing of the Western Days, most of our work, the last few meetings were about getting planning the event. So with that over, I'd like to say that, you know, seems to be a general consensus that it was an extremely successful event. So I think the commission members and volunteers deserve a heap of credit for what the, the hard work they did. Looking forward that this next, this next year, they're gonna put an emphasis on getting volunteers' knowledge about the event more earlier, so we can hopefully, you know?
We're kind of, we're kind of at our limit, yes. So I just want to kind of announce that Janice has set up a meeting here at the Civic Center on August third at seven, for those that are interested in volunteering for Western Days next year.
Will it be in Western Days or Independence Days?
And with that said, I, I believe next year is also gonna be the change, where it changes to Independence Days.
Yay. Thank you. Moving forward, Mr. Irvine, we did not put in a staff report here. Could we just insert that? Because I know you had a couple minor items that you wanted to report under the staff report.
Yeah. So I think the big one is, you may have seen, there was a story in the State Journal a couple days ago. We did a little, a little bit of a press conference in the amphitheater plaza. So the state awarded us a million dollars from the Capitol Farm Bill to essentially continue our waterfront park developments. This is gonna pair nicely with, we actually received a four hundred and fourteen thousand dollar grant from State Parks Recreation, their local government grant program. That was going to be improving the park space of Independence Landing, that lower terrace down there, running a trail through there, as well as kind of staircase ramp system that would connect two plazas, one on the top, one on the, one on the lower terrace. What this money's been able to do is essentially finish the Independence Landing Park, put kind of a covered pavilion on the lower plaza, a deck overlooking the river. And they've already wanted us focused on developing high-quality pathways access down at the end of C Street there, and kind of rolled that into the river, the park, kind of redesigned that whole parking area down there, which used to be for boat trailers, is unnecessary now. So we want to kind of take another look at that, see if we can, if you, if you look at it, it's graded in such a way that it slopes up towards the river. So if you're sitting in the amphitheater, you actually can't see the river. So what we want to do is see if we can rework the, the grading there, the pottery a little bit, to enhance river views, enhance river access for boats going forward, if people want to get down to the river. And then what we're hoping to do is leverage this money even more with additional grants. Because once you get that additional seed money, it's much easier to go to other fundraisers and say, hey, we've already got a million dollars, can you give us another half million or another million? So we're hoping to just kind of carry, continue to carry this on.
Questions?
When you said boats, you meant kayaks?
Yes, yes, non-boat race boats.
I've met with the Eugene Club, kayak canoe club, and they've given us feedback on what they think kayakers, them canoeists think is, would facilitate them stopping here, or staying overnight in a hotel, or stopping and going to the business place. And they were very generous. And we passed that on, and we'll be working on it.
Great. Councillor Morton?
Yes, Mr. Irvine, the million dollars that was received, that is for work on the property after the current work that we're doing for infrastructure is done.
Yeah, so this is gonna be, we, we don't actually have the improvements designed yet. So that's, the first step is we're gonna be completing the design and engineering for the improvements. And then we would hopefully, this winter, it'll depend a little bit, because if we're talking about in-water work, there's extra permitting that goes on, extra time that that takes. So this will either be happening next summer, or potentially the following spring, with any non-permitting.
And likely at the same time that the main development is going on?
The main development, what do you mean?
I mean, the building of the hotel and...
Yeah, ideally, yeah, so hopefully, we expect the private development to be happening on Independence Landing, and that's the nice part, is this would all be happening off of that terrace, so they really will not conflict.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Mayor, can I give a quick, I do it online, just 'cause I've got the information.
Sure, why not? Let's pick that up.
It won't take but a couple minutes. One of the key, one of the key figures you look at in the financial statements for a company like mine is their operating income. June of 16, operating income for mine was about, it's kind of like profit, only before these huge bond payments have to be made. So here's how good the company's doing, and before, years before, they incurred all this, this debt was incurred, and so they have to pay for it, but you gotta have a company that's making a profit before you start paying back debt. So last June, the operating income was $110,000. This last, and they've been making improvements since last March, so was $124,000, then April, $136,000, May, $144,000, and June was $150,000. So they continue to increase to be able to fill more and more of the bonds. They're starting to do the upgrade to the system now, and that will be on a, they've done a good time management program on it, and so we can track it on a monthly basis. One other thing, the total in 2006, 2017, operating income was about 1.53 million, I'm sorry, that's in, yeah, 16 and 17. Previous year was 1.23 million, so they're up about $300,000 year over year, as far as operating income goes. I think we'll see them smooth out at around $150,000 operating income per month, so you can figure it out from there. We need about $190,000 to be able to make 100% of the bond payments.
Great. Nice, nice report. Would be curious. Okay, we're gonna keep moving. We have several electro, sorry, I don't need to give you a report, Mr. Irvine, you have several things in series here that are related.
I might as well do this one from the podium, since this is the official measures. So first up, we've got a few different temporary license approvals requested. Two of them are related to the Eclipse. The first one would be for a beer festival on the Saturday of the Eclipse, that was the 19th. This, when we first began, we could do it in a kind of a festival weekend for the Eclipse. Alex, you know, approached with the idea of, hey, what if we do a beer festival in the park? That would be great, but it draws a lot of additional people to the area. Actually, our first, our first thought was, we actually approached Ida to see if they wanted to partner up this as a, essentially a fundraiser supporting organization. They felt like it was a little too much work form at that time, so the city decided to proceed accordingly. So that's what you have in front of you, is the proposed temporary license for the beer festival. It would be set up, as I said in the staff report, similarly to the Livers Edge Series, the difference of the beer garden would be essentially in a large tent on C Street. C Street is gonna be closed for, basically for the long weekend, so this would be a big tent there. If you're familiar with beer festivals, it's apparently typical, when you purchase a glass, you get a couple tokens live when you walk in. You can purchase and purchase additional tokens as you're playing, and each token is worth four ounces pour. So I think that's all the reporting that you can give on that. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer. I know how this, and Courtney are, are the coordinator here.
Questions for Mr. Irvine?
Will there be vendors like Mechanicos at these, at this occasion, selling food?
There is gonna be a food truck, a food truck festival down farther into the park, but yes, there will be food served.
Just one comment, lest you think that Ida is not doing anything for this, and I speak as chairman of the organization right now. Ida is doing three back-to-back ghost walks, and we're, now we've got a couple of other volunteers, and we're going to be able to accommodate up to 300 people. And we're also going to have a presence there for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
I should've said, I didn't hope that they were fully committed.
Thank you.
Words matter, don't they? Additional questions for staff? This is an action item.
I move to approve Rookie Sports Bar and Eatery to operate a temporary alcohol concession at the Independence Goes Dark event in River View Park on the date requested in the area designated and per the plan to manage contained in the OLCC application.
Second? I have a motion second for the discussion. All favor, six to five, say aye. Aye. Both motion carries, thank you very much.
Okay, so the next one is substantially similar. In this case, we're strictly talking about a beer garden. This would be essentially identical to what you wanted to see in the Summer Series. I would note that in this case, you know, we are trying to engage the downtown businesses more with our summer events in the amphitheater. We did actually approach all downtown businesses about if they were interested in running this beer garden. They all felt like they were fully committed to the Eclipse, and so, and so in this case, again, Mr. Trevino, he's already familiar with it, he's already got the setup working out, so that seemed like the most logical fallback position.
So, so you went out and asked other people if they wanted to be down there and do beer concessions?
Yes.
And they turned it down?
Yes.
Well, they're running businesses at the same time.
Right. Sure, understand, you can...
And I do wanna say that I did notice, excuse me for talking on, but I did notice tonight that there is one business that's already prepared for the Eclipse. Brew is selling T-shirts that says, "I blacked out at the brew."
You did not call that a holiday festival, huh?
Okay. I don't think there are any more questions. Somebody here to make the motion?
I certainly will. I move to allow Rookie Sports Bar and Eatery to operate a temporary alcohol concession at the Independence Goes Dark event in River View Park on the date requested in the area designated and per the plan to manage contained in the OLCC application.
Motion second, discussion, are we okay? All favor, six to five, say aye. Aye. Both motion carries. Your third one, sir?
So for the Eclipse, obviously, we wanna have a certain amount of proper and appropriate regulations and restrictions on what folks can't do in the park. We wanna have good fun, you know, in large groups get together, there's certain items and things and critters that can typically cause problems. So what you have in front of you is a requested list of rules that we would like approved for the Eclipse festivities.
Are there questions for staff on this? It is contained in the... Couple minor questions, too. So you said no animals, so the campers are already aware of what you're saying, and that's probably something that's gonna be very widely advertised, that no animals will be allowed.
Yeah, we're definitely trying to make it very clear, and when you, when you reserve the campground, you actually had to, you had the rules, you know, you had to look through before, you know, to go click. I agree, you know, it was, we're definitely trying to make sure the folks are aware of these restrictions.
There's also, I'm sorry, one more thing. There's also under, let's see, Terms and Conditions, number five, prohibited items, it says glass. I was wondering if that should maybe read glass containers, 'cause I'm thinking there's probably a few glass things that we would allow at the park. Is it person good for glasses, or, you know, things like that? I'm warning all those people, I just like to notice that.
Yeah, I think, I don't know, Chief, is that, is glass containers a typical, more typical wording, or?
That's your camping rules, right? I think that the Indigo Dirt Committee came up with those camping rules, so that's not...
Yeah, so you probably, that was the intent, was glass containers, right?
So is it a problem to add the word container at this point?
I don't believe so.
Is that okay? Any objection to that? Okay, we'll just consider that as an add for when we get to it.
I just, I have a question that was relative to the rest of the community beyond the people who are signing up to camp. I know that it is very popular at Western Days, come Independence Days, to bring your dog down to the park, and I would hope that there'll be lots of notification ahead of time, and maybe a sign posted, so you don't have people you have to turn away.
Yeah, I mean, we are, you know, we're trying to do everything we can to reach out to the community, especially in these next, these coming weeks, sort of saying, hey, this is happening, you know, not only be prepared, but also here's what's going on in the community, and here's how to have a good time.
But what's your fallback position? I drive down from Millian, Washington to see it, and I've got a little Bowser, and then you tell me I can't have it, so you're, I have to leave, and, or can I just, I got a leash, can I just put her on a leash? I mean, I don't know what the fallback position is, 'cause is it just like, that's it?
Yeah, pretty much.
And that only applies in the park.
Correct.
So they could, they could be on the street, they could be, you know...
Yeah, but I think what you're talking about is camping, if you know, if you're driving to the campground or for the event, they have, it's, you know, we are gonna attempt to post it as clearly as possible, as many times as possible, and if you still somehow miss it, I'm sorry.
There could be a business opportunity where not the man, but the...
Bikes, that seems a little strange. I wanna know logic on that one, because I go to a public campground, I see a lot of people way by.
Courtney, you want to speak to that?
I'm standing here.
It's being loud.
Comment on the dog question as well. There are some recording businesses in Monmouth that actually allow dogs to be housed there. But in terms of biking, that is for the park, just because of how many bodies will be in the park, we're not allowing them inside the park, but in the campgrounds, those are allowed.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you, makes sense.
Everybody else okay? Let's, let's move this along, if somebody would make a motion, so we can accept the rules slightly, Megan. Karen, you got that one?
Thank you. I move approval resolution number 17 dash 1459, enacting temporary park rules for the solar eclipse event with the change.
Thank you. Have a motion?
Second.
Second, but Counselor Takeus, any discussion? Everybody okay?
Yes.
All favor, six to five, say aye. Aye. In the close, motion carries, thank you very much. We're now moving on to item eight, and before we get to item eight, we're gonna pass on, I'm gonna jump ahead, are there counselor announcements? Counselor announcements they wanna make? Okay, we can, we will come back to that. We now have, the Independent City Council will now meet in executive session for the purpose of review and evaluation performance of the city manager. The executive sessions held pursuant to ORS 19266025. Child's council meeting, executive session, representative news media designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. Representatives of news media specifically director not to report on the deliberations during the executive session. Step to say the general subject of the session is clearly announced, no decisionally made executive session. It's time the council adjourned the conference room for duration of the executive session. Once, at the end of the executive session, once the executive session is adjourned, we'll return to open session in the council chambers. So let's take about five or six minutes to get there, and we'll go from there. Sound okay? All ready? We're back in regular session. Does anybody have any actions or discussions that you'd like to have?
I move to open consideration of city manager compensation adjustments.
Any objection to opening a city manager compensation discussion? Okay, I don't think, with agreement here, we don't need, I won't need a motion, we're, we've all agreed, we're, by consensus, we're gonna do that. So what do you have to say?
Well, looking at, what I can't say, looking at some other city managers and looking at some of the things that I believe that David has accomplished for our city, and the way I feel, he's really looked out and has really tried to protect independence, not always in the most smooth-going way, but I always feel that he's really working hard, looking out for the best for the city of Independence, and, and as I say, looking at the compensation of other city managers, I just think maybe we should be looking at raising this compensation a bit.
Do you have any, any frame there? Numbers you're talking about? That I'm really not sure. I would probably, I would... I'll just throw up 1.5%. Okay. Other people's thoughts? Anybody?
Well, yeah, I was formulating.
Okay.
Because, actually, I agree with much of what Thomas said, is that in the long run, I mean, David has, he's really out of the best interest of Independence Park. I think that he's done a good job, you know, in most cases of providing substantial leadership to our city staff and providing them the direction they need, and in return, has received from them the support that he needs. So I would also like to see an increase, and not having a calculator is really difficult for the organization.
You have a calculator.
Oh, that's true, that's true. And so I would be supportive of something in the way to increase, Tom, you know, also talked about sort of market value, I guess, is what we're looking at in comparison to other, you know, other cities, comfortable sizes and the compensation packages that they're providing within under, so, yes, I would, I would be supportive of at least what Thomas proposed. Sorry, Counselor, please.
Other thoughts?
Yeah, I think David has worked really hard, and, and of course, you know, there's some, some areas that he needs to kind of, but I feel that he, and I am in favor of a, an increase on his salary.
Other comments?
Yes, I do not favor an increase at this time. I believe that we cannot measure or should not measure by what other cities are giving to their city managers, or what, even what market value is, because we have a unique budget, we have a unique situation. I would like to be more apprised of what his future plans are, that would probably help me make a decision in the future, and at this time, I think the compensation should remain where it is.
Okay. Sir?
Pretty much agree with what Marilyn said. I think that's a fair compensation. Certainly, you should compensate people based on what other cities are doing, you should do it based upon what the value is perceived in that individual, and I don't think it should be any higher than it is right now.
Okay.
I'm of the mind that adjustment is warranted, and I don't, I think I might need to be seeking something higher than a percent and a half. I, I think one of the best indications of what's deserving is neighboring cities and, you know, you know, areas that are like. I would like to maybe see some sort of adding in some sort of deferred comp, something that's actually very quite standard in the other areas around.
Okay, people, I think that there is a merit in providing additional compensation, so I'll weigh in there. So we've kind of put out our opinions. Does someone wanna suggest a specific action?
I move to increase our city manager clients' compensation by 1.5%.
I need to know a number, I can't order 1.5%. What would that be?
I think that comes to, I think that comes to 1,900.
A year?
Yeah. I think that's...
I don't know what to say.
Yeah, I, from my, yeah, that's what I believe. We could make a number instead of a...
I just didn't have, I didn't know what 1.5 was.
Yeah. I, that's what I believe it is.
Sounds pretty...
Yeah, it was, yeah. Want to do a number instead of a...
It doesn't really...
Okay. So...
1.5 is the biggest thing I can think right now.
So was that, did you make a motion?
Yes.
Okay, you have a motion. Is there a second?
Or a second?
There is a second to that. There is a second, but now we have discussion. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to put in? I don't hear anybody else saying anything at this point. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have, and opposed?
No.
And I have forty-two, yes, and two no's. Karen, did you get those? The no is Day and Morton, and the ayes were the other four. Okay, that's done. And is there anything else that we need to do this evening, other than go home and eat dinner? If not, someone could send us home, please. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much.